Florida Northeast Business Association. We got guest Isaiah Thomas here.
Hey, what's going on y'all? How y'all doing? I'm excited to be here. Love coming up to the Northeast and happy to be on the podcast.
Yeah, thanks for coming. So, what do you got going on now? Like, we usually start off from early on childhood.
Sure.
But I want to talk to people about what you got going on right now, what you're doing right now.
Absolutely.
Position you're in.
So I'll say, I'll give you a quick synopsis. I'm born and raised in the city of Philadelphia.
Okay.
Product of the school district of Philadelphia. I'm a member of city council right now. So I'm a council member at large, which means I represent the entire city. One of seven that represents the entire city, one of seventeen members of city council. We work directly with the mayor. And, um, you know, uh, outside of that, I, um, listened to y'all's story about how you guys connected. And, um, you know, I think you guys have an amazing story. So I'm super happy to be on the podcast with y'all to talk about all and everything related to the city of Philadelphia, city council. Been what we're trying to do to move the city forward.
Yeah. So we're, uh, me and him actually got together in prison, uh, changed our lives around. And what we do with this is just, we try to show people the other side of Philadelphia, right? Because there's one side, but then there's also another, right? There's positivity going on. There's small business owners. There's opportunities here that people don't know about. So, what was your upbringing like, um, a little bit? Where are you from and?
Yeah, I grew up in the northwest section of the city. Like I said, you know, if you Philly person, you always say your schools, right? It's like a unwritten rule. So I went to Elwood, Conwell, and then I graduated from Frankfurt. My bachelor's degree is in psychological science, social science, and my master's is in education. I'm a big sports guy. Played basketball growing up.
You ain't good, man.
I mean, you know, I'm forty now, bro. If I'm not Brian, you know, so who's good at forty besides Brian? But, you know, I still coach high school basketball. So, uh, we even do our, uh, awards banquet here in this lodge every year. But, you know, even outside of that, just the irony of you guys meeting in prison, I mean, as a member of city council, I've done a lot of things to touch a lot of different spaces. But, um, I did pass a bill a few years back for people who were exonerated. For those in the listener audience who don't know, when people are exonerated, that means that, it's been determined that they should never have been incarcerated in the first place. And when someone's exonerated, because this process and this system is so new with exonerations in the city of Philadelphia, unfortunately, there are no resources for them. So I passed a bill that would guarantee a certain amount of resources for anybody who's been exonerated from the city of Philadelphia moving forward. And that's a bill that I'm proud of. I also just recently introduced the bill to change the oversight for our prison system. I mean, we've seen a lot of issues as it relates to, uh, what's going on with our prison system and, uh, issues related to staff, issues related to conditions of the building, uh, facility issues related to accountability. And so that's a bill that I just introduced a little while back. And I'm hoping that we can have a different level of oversight to put us in a position to try to address some of the problems that we know exist in, in, in the prison. So, uh, I just thought that was relevant to, you know, some of the things that you guys have going on in your, you know, in your past and looking at how you're trying to, uh, transition into a way where you're now being effective business leaders and, uh, artists and entrepreneurs in the city of Philadelphia. So, you know, who better than folks like you all to, to talk to these things about?
If there's anything we can do to help, because we were on the other side and we can tell you like from a different perspective on, you know, the guards can tell you and the, the warden and all can tell you from what it looks like, but from actually going through it for two years, we were in a county, we both did the same amount of time, five, five and a half years. Two years in the county, three years upstate.
Right.
And we kind of like followed each other, each stepping away, but you know, we know firsthand, like things that could get better and we ended up making it out and not going back and beating a recidivism rate. Not everyone has that opportunity.
And those, you, you are, you, you are exactly who we want to talk to when we're crafting the legislation to figure out what the final version looks like. So we're working with members of city council, working with the mayor, trying to figure out what do we do to improve those conditions? Because at the end of the day, everybody, like you said, doesn't have the, the, the story you all have, the experiences you have. But also I'm assuming and I'm just getting to know you, there's a certain level of perseverance that comes with your personality. To be able to make it through all the things that you're experiencing and to put yourself in a position to be on this side of things right now. So I commend you both and I really want you to, you know, have a collaborative effort with my office so we can hear, hear your perspective, your lived experiences and let that determine the direction we go in.
All right. Any question? Was it always your dream to do these things?
No, I never dreamed of being on city council. So I, um, I never even took a political science class. I actually decided to run for office when I was twenty-five because the governor at the time made the biggest cuts to public education that we ever seen. And I was working in educational spaces and it completely devastated us. And I was wondering, who would do something like that? Why would you choose education as the, the, the place where you're going to try to balance the budget? And it, it, to me, it was like, well, instead of complaining about politicians and elected officials being out of touch and not knowing what my neighborhood need, maybe I need to be the politician. Maybe I need to be the elected official because I know what my neighborhood need. So I decided to run for office when I was twenty-five years old, when I became eligible to run for city council. I was on a ballot at twenty-six and I didn't win my first race. Didn't win my second race, but for me, the third time was the charm. So it took me ten years to get a city council seat and.
You talk about resilience. That's also resilience right there.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
What were some different adversities that you had to overcome during this process?
I mean, loser.
Losing.
Right? Losing is a big thing, you know, and when you lose, it creates a lot of debt because when you go to run for office, you don't have a job. So you go months without bringing in an income, especially when you got a family. That's a real thing right there. Learning how to campaign, right? Campaigns are very expensive. I'm a kid from Philadelphia. I don't know many people at the age of twenty-five who could donate five hundred or a thousand dollars to me. City council raise costs is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I might've raised like twenty-five the first time I actually ran. So I had to learn how to raise money. I had to learn how to network, you know, growing up in Philly is not necessarily socially appropriate to introduce yourself to people who you don't know, right?
Joe, right?
Or another word.
Quote unquote.
I don't know what the audience is allowed to say. Yeah, y'all can say it, but I, you know, uh, but I mean, you gotta unlearn those things because as adults, we know that that's literally the opposite mindset that you need to have to be successful. So, you know, I had to unlearn those things as well too and put myself in a position where I was in spaces and in communities with people who have and can donate five hundred, thousand dollars. But also, you know, as you grow up, you and your friends, your network changed, right? You, how you live changed. So who I was at twenty-five when I first decided to run is not who I am at forty. And most of my friends are the same way. I have a lot of friends who couldn't give me five hundred dollars at twenty-five, but now they can, right? And that's just kind of how people matriculate through life. So those are the things I had to learn. Those are some of the hurdles I kind of had to jump through. And, you know, some fifteen years later, fifteen-ish years later.
What kept you keep going through all the losses and all the like perseverance that you had to put into finally winning? What was the driving factor for y'all?
Progress and seeing progress, right? I did better in two thousand and fifteen than what I did in two thousand and eleven, right? So I seen progress and every time I ran, I did a little bit better than what I did before. I think when you see some level of success, it's inspiring, even if it's not where you need to, where you think you should be as it relates to the work that you put in. I'm also a very spiritual person as well too. So, you know, I think, um, just my family being so supportive, uh, my parents, uh, my wife, my brothers and sisters, and just my church family staying prayed up, you know, all those things really helped me. I'm a part of a lot of big spaces and big networks and, um, you know, it's very difficult to lose, especially when you think you shouldn't. But sitting in the seat that I am in right now, I tell my wife all the time, it was probably a blessing in disguise that I lost those first couple of races. Cause somebody knew that what I didn't know, which was I probably wasn't ready yet.
Before, uh, unfortunately we got cut off, got you back here, um, we were just talking about your drive after losing, like what kept you going? You said, um, the progress that you did see. And you said also that you weren't ready at that time, but you know, obviously you're in the position you're in now. Where do you see yourself going, you know, the next year, two, five years down the line?
I can't even thinking about that right now, to be honest with you, because, you know, I've, um, I'm experiencing a lot of different things. And, you know, I lost my mom last year.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, no. And it really just changed my perspective on life. And so, right now, you know, I'm just trying to live in the moment and take it one day at a time. You know, whatever political future the creator has in store for me, I'm going to make sure that I'm prepared to take advantage of any endeavor that kind of presents itself. But, you know, right now, I would love to see my camp grow. That's a big thing. I do a free basketball camp every year. We had about a hundred and seventy-five kids there this year. The last two weeks of August, I would like to see that grow. I do a huge gaming event in the city of Philadelphia. We try to make Philadelphia a home for gaming and the business of gaming. It's a multi-billion dollar business and it's an opportunity for young people to transition into that profession as entrepreneurs, as workers with this earning a quality wage. And we want that to be an option here in the city of Philadelphia. I'm doing a lot around public education. I'm the chair of the education committee. I'm a former teacher myself. So I would like to see some improvement around my school. So you can see I'm really entrenched in local government. I'm spending a lot of time on the national campaign because that election matters for local government and for the work that we do. But I'm laser sharp focused on trying to improve the quality of life of everyday Philadelphians. Because while I could sit here and talk about some of the things that's going well, I still know people that's traumatized from watching the homicide. You know, I still think about the kids at Dobbin's High School that witnessed something that none of us seen, you know, during our time growing up. I still think about the kids who was home with their abusers during the pandemic. You know, those are the things that keep me up at night. And so I'm really trying to focus on the job that I have right now. And when I think about the next two, three, four, five years, I think about where do I want Philadelphia to be? Not necessarily where do I want it to be?
Okay. Um, what's some advice you can give to, um, somebody that's trying to follow in your shoes, like see what you're doing and might want to one day be in your position?
Just ask. That's it. You know what I mean? Like ask. You want to be in my position, come see my position. See if there's really something you want to do. I think what you and I was talking about earlier, just people, you know, not growing up in a space in a place where it's the cultural norm to talk to strangers. And the spaces that I'm in, it is the norm, right? You the weirdo when someone walking down the hall and they say good morning and you don't say good morning back. They not the weirdo. You're the weirdo. And I think that's a social adjustment that essentially happens that, that has to happen because for survival purposes, we were taught these things that are not necessarily the best way to move your, your professional agenda. Um, so, so that would be my advice.
Okay.
Stay curious and keep asking questions, right?
I mean, network. Ask questions. Connect with people. Build, you know, uh, this world is more about who you know than what you know. And there's been a lot of intelligent people that haven't been able to navigate their way into a successful profession because they don't have the social skills.
And there was, there's a lot of people with a lower IQ that.
Have the social skills. And you look up and they're influencing media and creativity and all that because they know how to, you know, craft a message that that lands with a lot of people. Doesn't necessarily mean the content is quality, but you know, that's, 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 that's part of the game.
So who's running in basketball? You or Jimmy?
Dylan? Dylan got me. Jimmy is my man. That's my boy. I know I'm a black guy. He the white ball. I'm supposed to be better than him, right? Nah, Jimmy a little older than me. Uh, Jimmy played D-one basketball. Jimmy tough. You know what I mean? We still do like celebrity games and all that right now. Left-handed, slick, smooth passing. He better than me. You know what I mean? Today, I might have beat him today, but today don't count. I'm forty. So I can't say it count now when I said it, it count earlier. So yeah, no, Jimmy, 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 Jimmy tough. Jimmy the best elected, elected official. I'm second. Elected officials don't got ballgame. So if maybe Jimmy had two on two, we'd probably beat everybody in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Mayors and all, you know, tell Eli Gany in Pittsburgh.
We gotta set up a two on two with y'all two against us.
Hey, we could do that too. Yeah. All week time I hold up y'all. Hold up y'all.
I'm thirty-six.
Alright, that's cool.
I'm thirty-two.
You might be a little too young. Nah, we could do something. I'm down. I'm down. That'd be fun.
That'd be really fun. I'm going to say something to Jimmy when he leaves.
Yeah, let, let Jimmy know. But Jimmy, you know, I definitely want to, uh, close out by giving a shout out to Senator Jimmy Dillon. You know, he's a rookie right now in the senate. And, um, hopefully y'all can collab me when y'all post this on social media with Jimmy because this is my boy. And, um, Senator Dillon has been one of the best advocates in any branch of government for out of school time activities, specifically sports-based funding for organizations to be able to give free programming to young people in the city of Philadelphia. He's a coach, you know, his daughter got ballgame and he understands firsthand how the organizations who provide free programming for young people need government support. So, you know, uh, we can laugh, we can joke and all that, but that's my guy in the senate who've been fighting and supporting young people here in the city of Philadelphia. I love working with him and I appreciate all he's done to bring home resources for us.
Yeah, and them activities after school are so important because what are you getting into after school?
Exactly.
You're confined in school, supposed to learn. What are you doing after school?
And when we was growing up, you had a lot of free programs. You can go to a Salvation Army, a Powell Center, you know what I mean? YMCA. Look, just like businesses closed during the pandemic, so did those type of organizations and they didn't come back. So we have to supplement what, for what young people aren't getting that we got to assure that they have the same access and opportunities that existed for us growing up. You know, a quality mentor, quality program that change your life. Changes your life. A lot of people will say, you know, my coach here, my mentor here, my teacher here, the chess program, the arts and culture program, you know, places like Freedom Theater, they don't exist right now. And that matters. So huge shout out to Jimmy Dillon because he's fighting that issue and, you know, that's my guy.
Appreciate you, man. Thanks for coming on.
Thank y'all for having me. Hopefully it won't be the last time.
Yeah, hopefully you connect. I would love to get you on for a full interview.
I'm down.
And I wanted two on two.
Y'all set up the joint. Just make sure y'all DM me. Dave, you got a card on you?
This is Street Success Podcast. This is Frank.
Jaleel.
And we got Jimmy.
State Senator Jimmy Dillon.
Jimmy, um, so a little bit about us and Streets of Success. So we started this, um, about, how long ago?
Seven months ago.
Seven months ago. Uh, we haven't missed a week, which we're proud of, of getting different guests on. So basically this is to highlight people that grew up in Philadelphia or like an inner city that has a story, right? We all have a story, um, some overcome, whether it's a drug addiction, incarceration, weight loss, trauma, abuse. And then just shed light on it to, so someone else could get through what they went through.
And empower them as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So a little bit about me and Jaleel, we met each other in prison, actually. Um, we were in CFCF and then we went upstate. Separately, but we always encountered each other in traffic and all.
Then upstate. Had to save him a couple times.
Understood.
So we got, um, a little close up there. We had the same mindset, right? We're like, we don't want to come back here. We're talking about books we read. We're taking courses. Uh, I got my GED up there. He got a college.
Took business management.
Wonderful.
So we came home, we stayed in touch. Uh, we both just started doing things, uh, positive and productive. Started a business. He got into some real estate stuff. I ended up getting into some real estate stuff. He, uh, explored a couple of different businesses and after a while we said, hey, let's, you know, this podcast thing's newer. A lot of people were doing it. And we were actually running, um, programs up there.
Yeah. Uh, we were going to the education building, um, speaking to lifers, teaching different people about credit and stuff like that, stocks. All different types of stuff, just to change like their mindset to where it was, to where our.
No, no, you're good. Uh, I was just saying, we took it from there and just put it right back out here now and into society where there is a lot of people that are still stuck in the same mindset, stuck in the same routine, stuck in the same habits. We try to break that. We try to give insight on a different way of living, right? Or showing possibilities, showing like you can become something else. So that's a little bit about us. If you want to tell, you know, the guest a little bit about you and where you're at and how you got in your position.
Sure. So, um, again, my, my name is Jimmy Dillon. I'm a born and raised here in northeast Philadelphia. I went to Our Lady of Calvary School. I graduated back in nineteen ninety-two. And after that, I went to a private high school called Holy Ghost Prep. Really set me up academically to move forward. Um, nineteen ninety-six, I graduated from Holy Ghost. I actually obtained a full scholarship to the University of Notre Dame for basketball.
Wow.
So I got to go travel the globe, travel the world, um.
You still got it?
Still can play a little bit.
Know Zach Randolph?
I do.
That's his game.
Is it? There you go. There it is, man. You're a banger. I don't step foot inside the three-point line anymore, but, you know, Councilman Thomas, who I know has been a guest here. And I, uh, have a, just a passion for student athletes and stuff that, you know, I'll get into a little bit of it. But I actually, it was a great opportunity to go overseas and play some professional basketball for a few years, right? So basketball has always been a drive and a passion of mine. Uh, I was very fortunate. Uh, my AAU team, I had a guy by the name of Kobe Bryant on my AAU team. I had a guy by the name of Richard Hamilton who won an NCAA title at UConn and then, you know, won an NBA title with the Pistons. And obviously everybody knows all about Kobe's drive, determination and that mama mentality and stuff. And I, I get goosebumps talking about him and I miss him fully to these days because he's somebody I thought would be impacting basketball for a long time. Lot of, lot of opportunities were given to me by a lot of different people, you know, not just up here in the Northeast, but I used to go out to Abington to play. I would go down to North Philly, the Twenty-Fifth and Diamond to play. I'd go down to Sunny Hill League. There you go, bud. I'd run down to the, uh, the, the Sunny Hill League down at McGonigal Hall and things, right? That idea of what basketball has taken to me really inspired me to stay working with kids. So about seventeen years ago, I started a basketball academy and it's still in existence. A small business owner up here. And, and during that time, just again, taking kids, uh, that had hopes and had dreams and had opportunities. And it's like, hey, I want to play at the next level, right? And there were so many people that helped me get to where I got to. Alongside with my basketball academy, my first job after I got done playing professionally, I came back and I went down. I worked for the city, um, at truancy court. Who's now Supreme Court Justice Kevin Dougherty, right? So I always stayed in an envisionment that I wanted to help kids, right? I wanted to, so as I'm out here and I'm listening to these stories about why kids aren't going to school and I'm hearing about the struggles and I'm hearing about the family issues and stuff. Never been about the job and the payment down there. It's about putting these kids back on the right path, right? From when I left truancy court, I went over and I worked at the school district and got a job as a grant compliance monitor. And I walked around the schools and just went in there and listened to teachers' issues, administrative issues and the struggles that go on in our, our school system. When the opportunity came along for me to run for office, you know, I had an established business, um, you know, I'm the father of two girls, right? And it was the right opportunity for me to really, really serve my community on a bigger scale, right? So that youth development has always been there. You know, I've been an officer about two and a half years now. And my job is simple, right? I turn around and open up constituent services for issues for people in the community, whether it's for young kids in schools or older people in the community. And I also turn around and I'm responsible for a ton of funding, right? I'm happy to announce I brought over thirty million dollars back to the northeast Philadelphia that go toward things like public safety, goes towards schools, that goes towards youth programming, that go towards nonprofits, right? Things about people that want to build and strive to help our community become a better place, right? So the, the, the idea of public service, um, and, and the give back is really, really important. And it's really, really instrumental and crucial in my life in terms of me getting to the hopes and dreams that I've chased, right? Being a young kid from northeast Philly, you don't hear too much kids about playing professional basketball, right? Uh, maybe you think you gotta go a different route. That's all I needed somebody to was to tell me I couldn't do something, right? So again, it's, it's about striving and chasing those kids now. And, you know, I'm happy to be involved in hundreds of kids' lives and, and the coaching world and in the basketball world. You know, just trying to get some people to, to, to chase that passion and dreams of where the world and where basketball has taken me.
Adversities. What were some adversities that you had to overcome going through this whole process from playing professional basketball overseas and to where you're at now?
Again, I just think life evolves so fast, right? So you're coming up and, um, you know, we'd be in opportunities where, you know, whether it be a team aspect or whether you're a personal aspect, right? You're, you're, you're trying to make it to a level, right? You're trying to stay on a competitive level, right? So that challenge is always there, right? And the cool part about what happens on a basketball court, right? Those characteristics, those things translate off the court, right? So you get out in real life, right? And you become a leader and being a point guard my whole life, I was always about trying to make people around me better, right? So I've taken that approach toward when I've gotten to office, you know, my staff trying to make people better, get out into the community and, and trying to help and push people in the right direction, right? Life's never fair. Life's always going to throw curveballs at you. Not, everything's going to wait, going to go your way. You're not going to win all these games that you're playing, right? It's not about winning and losing. It's about winning and learning so that you can turn around and produce yourself to move forward, right? So, you know, I don't want to sit here and tell you it's, it's been all roses for me from that standpoint because the people don't understand from my end, there's a lot of those hours that when everybody's out having that fun, you know, and the kids are at the movies and the kids are doing X, Y, and Z and maybe do, you know, I was grinding out in that gym and stuff and letting them sacrifices pay off. And they're the things that I try to instill in a lot of our kids in moving forward these days.
Mama mentality.
There it is, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the crazy thing is about Kobe is he didn't even get started on his career after basketball yet.
Right.
And I know he would have made an impact.
No doubt about it.
Look, look how he was when he focused on, on the court.
With, with his daughters and stuff, you know, he started the girl dad approach and stuff, right? I'm out here and my, my, my oldest is a sophomore and a cheerleader at Archway Ryan up here in the Northeast. And my youngest plays volleyball and basketball at the school that I went to and stuff, right? And you, you get to share these stories of people and people like kind of light up a little bit, right? Again, it's like those decisions you make, those choices you make about things that you got to give up in order to put yourselves in those situations, right? It's not easy for kids, right? But I try to tell kids through my basketball academy, huh, you're coming to me to work out. This stuff's easy. You're going to practice. That stuff's easy. What's hard is when nobody's around, right? Who's pushing you? Who's motivating you? Who's giving you that drive to do the things? Because things are easy when you got somebody there pushing you and guiding you, right? Can you take care of your personal responsibilities when you're by yourself?
It's you versus you. It's always you versus you.
I love that mentality.
Yeah, you gotta get better than yourself. So that's the only comparison really. So what made you get in, uh, really into like the politics and all?
Yeah. I mean, again, an opportunity presented itself. I've been in the youth sector for well over, you know, a decade and things. And when an opportunity came across that I would be able to get out into my community more, people have been telling me for so long, man, you, you got the niche for this, right? You're a likable person. I don't take a political approach to anything that I do up here. I take a neighborhood approach to what I've done up here. I take my business approach on how I built my business from one gym with about twenty kids to twenty-four, you know, gyms throughout southeastern Pennsylvania, right? Never turned around, had anything to do with who was operating what then and there, right? It was about accountability, right? It was about believing in yourself, that your product was well enough that people were going to come and buy into what you believed in, right? By just all those times. And again, you got to start things off here. I wasn't, I haven't raised my rates in over seventeen years, right? It's just been about putting that time in and the accountability so that people can say that, hey, this guy's not here for the money. This guy's here because he wants to impact kids' lives. And what's so cool now, and, you know, obviously shows my age, but now you see what happens with these kids after high school or after college, right? With their careers. And I have guys that came through my academy, like Orion Arts Diakonos, right? A Colin Gillespie who's on a two-way deal out in Phoenix right now, right? Emile Jefferson is a hometown Philly kid who's up an assistant coach for the Boston Celtics right now, who just won a, an NBA title last year, right? Having those relationships and seeing what those guys are impacting lives and stuff, right? Everybody's story is so unique. Everybody's back and everybody's thinking, where you guys come from, right? It's about, hey, man, the struggles are there. Life's not fair. Everybody's got to turn and be in a position to turn around and make the best of it. Some choose to, some choose not to, right? It's that uphill fight where it's you against you, like you were mentioning, Frank.
Yeah, well, life is not fair for everyone. So everyone gets cards dealt to them. Some make their life better with worse cards.
Sure.
So if you have that in mind, like this person started with less than me or had less opportunity than me, but still made it further than, well, who's to blame, right? It's that accountability that you were talking about.
You know, I sit up in Harrisburg and you have kids come in all the time who advocate, right? And they're not kids from northeast Philadelphia, right? They're kids that are in struggle in school districts, out here struggling neighborhoods, high poverty levels, right? The only place that some of them can really turn is to the streets and stuff, right? But you see people who invest back in schooling and invest back in communities, right? Before school programs, kids feel safe, right? After school programming. So parents have that mentality too, that, hey, my kid's going to be okay here, right? Finding that funding on a state level to make sure that you're investing and, and maturing and, and molding the minds of our, our kids here, right? Because we all don't know what they're made of, right? Got to just give them that opportunity. You got to show them that you give a you-know-what, right? You got to give them that backbone, right? And I'm sure there were people in your lives who, you know, as things weren't sour and stuff, right? There weren't those people, right? But you find these people that mentoring programs, you know, look at our mental health situation these days, right? It's real. And don't let anybody sit here and tell you it's not, right?
No, it is.
Everybody struggles with so many things in so many different ways.
And people don't even consider therapy. Growing up where we're from, like it's like therapy, I'm not going to have to talk about. So yeah, they suppress it with substances or a lifestyle that is not, you know, built for success.
Sure.
So as far as the basketball goes, um, you, you're building these kids up as athletes, right? But then in the back of their head, like how many make it as a NBA player, right? But then what are you doing for like, alright, we're going to make you the best athlete, give you the best chance. But what else are you like incorporating into what you got going on to, to see later in life when, if the career doesn't work out?
Sure, absolutely. Listen, the ball stops bouncing for everybody, right? At some point or another, whether you make it to that highest level or whether, you know, the collegiate level stops, after that, you're done. The high school level, it stops in some kids in grade school, right? But it, it's funny because when I first came out, I just, I had this network, being a professional basketball player and being a point guard with development players. And I just worked with all upper echelon guys, right? I had guys like Sean Singletary and Kyle Lowry and Troy Murphy, all, excuse me, NBA guys, right? And then I just had literally like a family member one day who knew me from growing up, at least, you know, I got some younger kids here. What about my kid? I'm like, well, I don't know. What do you, I'll, I'll go run a court for you, you know, I'll go do this and that, right? It was about, alright, here's an opportunity for me to go help out with some of these lives, right? So again, I think it's that standpoint, whether, you know, your, your, your goal here, right? Everybody's got to set goals and lives, right? And do you want to be that high school player? Do you want to be a high school starter? Do you want to be a high school all-star? Do you want to be a high school All-American, right? Alright, well, what your expectations, what your goals are, you got to match that up with your work ethic. I love talking work ethics, right? People are talking, man. I'll just give you a small example of just, again, how we're out in real life situations here, right? Pandemic comes in, right? Work from home stuff starts, corporations find these different platforms and models on virtual days and, 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 you know, how that platform's set. Our economy starts to go down here in our city and our mayor comes in, who's elected for eleven months now and a few months ago, asked people to start going back to work for five days a week, right? And people are like, oh no, man, I can't do that. Like for twenty years now, I've been working seven days a week, right? It's just a grind, right? I choose to turn around and be an official. I choose to be a warrior. I choose to have a small business. I choose to, to coach, right? Because I feel, and I was always taught growing up, that if you don't have that work ethic, if you don't have that passion, if you don't have that grind, somebody else is going to go take that from you. somebody else is gonna go take that from you, right? People are gonna come and take that work on plate, right? That resume, right, alright, there's a piece of paper here, but what's gonna separate you, right? From somebody else choosing somebody else for that thing's there, right? It's about these kids really digging deep and finding out what their, what their love, what their passion is. Mine was basketball, we're around a ton of kids here who love to draw, we got kids here who are getting involved in apprenticeship program and education stuff and they're getting their hands on in, in solar, like an early age. School up here in the northeast, Father Judge High School, just put an airplane hangar for a career pathways education center that's gonna teach them HVAC work, it's gonna teach them, um, welding, it's gonna teach them automotive stuff. So now, at the end of the day, when you're eighteen years old, nobody's forcing college down your throat. After you grab that college degree, there's no guarantee you're gonna have that job, but what you are gonna guarantee, you're gonna have some student debt. How about those kids going to an apprenticeship program or a trade or a union?
Still making eighty grand, a hundred grand a year.
You're coming out, you might be the, the, the top, you know, earner in your house, right, around your mom and dad when you're eighteen, nineteen. So now, instead when you're graduating college, it's one, one, twenty-two, without a job and with debt. You might be in a position to buy yourself a house, right? Those career paths, those opportunities, we need to really just open as many doors as we can for all of our kids.
Right. Well, that's great, and all the things you, you said and mentioned were like amazing, man. And seriously, even when we're dealing with this, as far as like you have the different gyms in basketball and stuff like that for the kids, it all comes down to teaching these kids self-talk. What they tell themselves, when those negative thoughts coming in their mind, and teaching them resilience and how to keep going through it all. That's what it comes down to, so, we appreciate everything you're doing, man.
It starts with the youth though, because that's how you change it for the future. So it's like what you do today is gonna determine where you end up, so how we treat our youth today is gonna determine how the society ends up.
Sure, just last week, um, a bunch of us, myself, the mayor, our police commissioner up here, the actual president of the FOP Lodge where we are right now today, uh, as well as a few people from the Philadelphia Police Foundation and Parks and Rec, we got together for our press conference and we delivered five million dollars on public safety, on law enforcement, on the things that we know our city needs, right? Because we're so scarce, right, we need the manpower, we need the tools, we need the resources to make a lot of these things happen, right? And it might not benefit the people that are here now, right? But again, when you're doing that stuff at a playground, which is somewhere like I grew up on, right? My rules were simple, man, respect everybody around you, and when the streetlights came on, it was time to go home, right? And you, and you, you want about your business that way, right? There's no real other scenarios to do, like when you just have that drive and passion, right? But back to that, like, investing in school safety, right? Letting parents know that when they drop a kid off at school, things are gonna be okay at the pickup time and at, at the, uh, the drop-off time, right, and then knowing that there's issues going on at the school, right? You hear too many sad stories about it, right? You hear too many kids with guns these days, right? And this investment that we're making back here into the city is gonna address school violence, youth violence, gang violence, gun violence, right? Because it's so needed, right? I'm a state senator, so people across the state and other areas might not see it down here, but we live it, we feel it every day down here, right? We have the stories to share, shooting up here in the north, uh, at Northeast High School last, you know, at a bus stop, six kids who went to school that day, right? Mom and dad aren't thinking about that kid not coming home, right? And it's craziness, so again, you know, some legislation up there, some funding to come back here. There's no reason that, you know, anybody who's a child is well up to our senior citizens and stuff shouldn't feel safe walking around their communities and neighborhoods.
And Philadelphia is such a great city, it's just hindered by, you know, negativity always screams louder than the positivity, but.
It all started when we threw snowballs at Santa back in the day, the Angels games, right? So true.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to put no age, um, on you, but that was y'all generation.
There it was, correct, 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 everybody's got their horror stories, that's for sure.
Yeah, um, great interview, man.
Yeah, nah, appreciate having you on, is there anything, um, you know, you want to tell our, our audience, like, so we have, um, connected to the streets a little bit, um, we have a lot of friends and family that we grew up with that are still in, you could say, lower-class society.
Sure.
Um, and we're transitioning, trying to get out, but we don't want to lose touch with our people and we're networking with people like yourself and other business owners, stuff like that, that's why we're here. So, anything to tell our, our audience?
No, again, I, I think it's about finding out your niche, looking into resource and stuff, right? And I pitch this to everybody, right, you know, whether I'm out with kids and stuff, it's like, hey, you want to come by my basketball academy, see what it's like, right? Alright, if not, hey, there's some school activities coming up, there's some resource fairs, there's some things for you to get around to, right? But if you don't ask, you don't know, right? And it's the same sort of situation with, you know, homeowners in my district, or seniors in my district, right? We're talking about seniors who are on some fixed incomes right now, and hey, do I have to choose between my healthcare? Hey, do I gotta choose between my housing? Hey, do I gotta choose here between putting food on my plate, right? On a fixed income, it's tough, right? So if there's opportunities and tools out there for people, you gotta turn around and, and indulge, right? You gotta turn around and see what's out there for you, right? We encourage all of our, our community partners up here, all of our people in the district to come and stop by our office just to see if there's things that help, whether it's a property tax rebate, right? Maybe you're eligible for some sort of grant along the way. You know, we're up here tonight for the, the Foreign Northeast Small Business Association thing, these guys are volunteers, so we're kicking things off here by just trying to want to navigate and elevate and really lift up our communities just by having businesses that where I go around, I just want good community partners, right? I want people to get out, I want block parties, I want excitement, I want environments, I want people out talking with one another and getting their faces out of cell phones, right? You know, it's, it's, it's around, it's happening. I know, listen, I'm guilty of it, right?
I gotta do a lot of editing and networking and DMs, don't blame me.
Talking to him is like I'm talking to the TV.
There you go, man, it's-
Someone gotta edit the video.
It's that world I understand, I pay somebody to do it, so, there you go.
We'll get there at some point, but like, how you're saying, like with the small businesses in the community and stuff, like, the small businesses really control the neighborhoods and are really tapped in, they're tapped in with the government, they're tapped in with society. It's like kind of that bridge of like, you know, the working class and, you know, the, the kids and the community and then to like, you know, to your platform even.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm, I'm starting seventeen years ago, and you know, we're going back to two thousand and seven, I'm sitting down at truancy court and stuff and I'm like, man, I got an opportunity here, but me being down here for a nine to five and then I'm leaving that and I'm going to a gym six to nine every night, you know, and I'm getting home, and then I got administrative work to do on top of, right? And then I'm in gyms on Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, training AAU programs on Sundays. I mean, when I tell you I run rampant and stuff, like, these, these sixteen, seventeen-hour days to me are just like, man, I've just been doing this, right? But again, it's put me in a position where I had a, I had an envision, I had, I'm working with one kid in one gym, right? Now that one gym with twenty kids, right, hey, I got another gym for you too, and we just keep moving along with things, right? But I never took my foot off the pedal because I never turned around and said to myself, hey, this is too much, or hey, this is an opportunity, right? So when people are out there now, having that thought, having that dream, having that passion, but they want to take that step forward, but they don't know how to, right? This is what it's about, right? Going around people that have started a business, starting up whether you're gonna be a profiter or a nonprofit, the 501(c)(3), you know, the, the EIN numbers and stuff, you guys have been there, right? I mean, I have a basketball academy, I just can't walk into a gym and roll a ball out, I need insurance, I have accountants, I have lawyers, right? Big business when it gets down to, and around to things, right? So, I wish you guys nothing but the best of luck, these podcasts, you know, obviously, uh, took off during, during the time where, you know, we couldn't get out, right? Everybody's sitting in their houses and all, it's like, how do we communicate?
It's crazy, so, I want to talk about, did you have a vision of being where you're at now?
Oh my god.
Did that grow as you grow?
Listen, I'm gonna have a good book one day, fellas, alright? Because it went from like the basketball world into, you know, just wanting to be in there. In, in January of two thousand twenty-two, my house caught fire on my birthday. Literally, I was washing my daughter's uniform, dryer lint caught on fire and stuff, I'm literally like, trying not even be sarcastic here. I was on my way out to dinner to go to hibachi, and the hibachi made its way to my house, alright? So again, with that all said and done, right, my house goes up and I'm sitting there with my two daughters and, and my mom watching my house go up. Six months later, I become an elected state senator, right? Like, the turn of events, one thing, right? And I'm panicking and I'm around and I'm doing all these things to make sure I'm covered in this and that, make sure everybody's taken care of, I'm doing my job, I'm doing the basketball academy, take care of my kids. April first, it's, hey, do you want to run for senate? No, I don't want to be in politics, you need your head examined to be in politics these days. An opportunity came across, right? It's like, God was looking down on me saying, this is your opportunity, you know? Six weeks later, I'm elected in June, right? January fifteenth, my house burns down, June third, I'm in the state senate up in Harrisburg representing my community, right? Life just throws things at you, man, and I could have sat back there and said, aw, man, poor me, I can't believe this happened to me and stuff. I spun it, I got two healthy girls, I got my mom out, none of my neighbors are healthy, right? Back to the grind, back to the things that have gotten me to where I got to.
A lot of successful people do. You gotta turn a negative into a positive and you gotta look at it, what can I gain from this? Like, you can't just take it as a loss, like, what's the lesson here?
Self-talk too, comes back down to self-talk.
How you're talking to yourself, how you're looking in the situation.
Through all of this.
No doubt about it.
Yeah.
One more thing before you go, because I heard you talk, I'm sorry, but I, I heard you talking about, you know, you were one guy with one kid in the gym, now you're one guy with twenty kids, so like eventually that grows, so like, you have to be a leader that builds other leaders now to put in these, and that's what this whole country's about, right? Like, leaders building other leaders.
Absolutely, there's nothing better for me, like I mentioned, you know, these kids, either when they graduate high school, they graduate college and they move on to become whatever succession, whatever passion, whatever that drive is, right? Seeing them, but the greatest compliment for me is working with kids, and then when those kids done, hey Jim, can I come get in the gym with you and help others because of how much you helped me?